We're at this point, I think we'll read here the more than this guy can talk that we're calling here. Within thirty-five days of receiving amendment, planning board shall hold a protocol of balance two. The planning board shall hold a public hearing on the proposed amendments as supposed to happen today, and a rest amendment has been submitted by municipal officers, all by petition. This is petition. The board shall vote whether to forward an amendment to the municipal officers. So, this is what's happening tonight. We are listening, and then we forward the amendment to the select board. The board shall write a written recommendation and get it passed through the select board, and to the town meeting, especially town meeting prior to any action we mentioned by the municipal office. So, the select board needs to determine, they get this written report from this meeting here, they'll discuss it next Tuesday, and they have to make a final decision whether they want to send it to a special town meeting. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, you know, passage to the select board, any action on the amendment. Okay, start off, let's determine whether we need a vote to go into a public hearing vote. Okay, and I'm asking that we still have a mask requirement, so if anybody needs a mask as it's known, or find help. Yeah, do we need a vote to get into public hearing? Okay, so let's discuss the ground rules of public hearing. I am in charge of the public hearing, I can tell you to speak, or not to speak, it goes with the planning board as well. Possibly, for some reason, there are pretty strict rules about public hearing, I guess those tend to turn into certain, a little bit of a confrontation sometimes. So, all questions go for me, even those from the board, I may allow back and forth as long as it's productive and informative. In order for everyone to be able to speak, as well as be heard, we insist that you come forward, use this microphone, keep your comments short, I'm not going to put any limits on it right now, there are not that many, depending on how many, I have three speakers, three speakers right here listed, if anybody wants to list themselves, feel free to come forward, but you can just line up, but I'd like you to speak at the microphone, state your name, state your address, be civilized, honestly, and avoid aggressive language, keep the peace. Any unlawful behavior will not be tolerated, calls from the audience will be ignored, if there's any kind of turmoil, the meeting will be adjourned. Let's determine whether our council or bureau have any additional comments. Okay, let's hear from the applicant. This is, the public here is now open, and I'm asking the applicant to step up to the microphone. Thank you. Thank you.
Hope that this works with the mask that we sounded before. I'm Paul Roseko, represent our Eben Association and Tom and Locken, we meet each other over Friday here. We had, were involved trying to develop new ordinance that would deal with the prospect of solar regulation in the town of Lowell, so that we wouldn't be likely to be trying to make judgments about whether something was a telecommunications facility, an manufacturing facility, and so the performances that existed, that were in place for this community, were totally insufficient to deal with the allocation inside of Lowell for solar energy generally. So, as a result of working through it, trying to respond to the questions, making submissions to the planning board, we also made a concerted effort to provide and develop our own ordinance that would reflect what we perceive to be the values of the community around matters of like to rural therapy, the community, the values expressed in the community as a time. And so, and we also thought it would be really good to do, to put together something that would reflect what other communities have done in front of the same situation. So, we can only, the petition was done very quickly, they had very, very high level of support for it, we've met the threshold of three or four times the margin, and appended to the petition of this ordinance. So, and you'll see, provided to the public, and to the board, and we have, I have a few copies here, but the concept was to develop a personal solar, EMH solar, and commercial industrial. And so, what we did is, we took the best parts of the audiences that were drafted by other communities, and developed, as significantly we have here, you can see what I'm talking about, the town of Denmark, which adopted solar regulations after the enactment of its own law, trying to do a similar one. We have comments on, a lot of them, we feel, a number of other communities. And so, what we did was to have that kind of color to it, so that people can see where it came from. So, this is designed to be able to provide information to the community, and a means to regulate the solar, or weighted in a sense for, to a higher personal uses as a matter of right. Okay, this is kind of the, kind of existing ordinance, it was nothing, it was actually an issue within the special town meeting about whether, if something is not allowed, is it protected? That's, that's an issue that's going to be out there, and in the absence of ordinance like this, then somebody potentially applying for a personal use, we would necessarily be able to do it. So, what we did was we tried to create, like a continuum, so that it misses with respect to uses that go ahead into personal uses, and then ramp up so that that's a large scale, huge project, it'd be more strictly regulated, so in a sense, so that's a fairly good issue, and you think it's measured, like any statute or constitution or anything else, it may have flaws, and that'll be kind of better for the voting process. But, what is pushing people to consent when they're voting on this, of this community, is not letting the, perfectly beginning, for instance, so we had a, this Paul asked a question at the last meeting about underarm, there are contiguous processes, ten acres, where one parcel, a hundred ten acres, is having accounted toward the threshold in perspective of, I didn't really have a good answer at the time, but, so what we did was dug back in, and that's actually true, I mean, with the ability of a second property because of the presence of the solar on the adjacent property. A little bit of motivation for that, this is to deal with what we call the Gazebridge, where you can put, you can acquire properties, one after another, different of a policy, and so it was designed to prevent kind of the abuse of that kind of situation. But, that's a possibility that, going forward, if there's a question of whether that provision of ordinance would work, or whether thresholds are, or some of the mechanics that specify it becomes kind of an issue, then there's a regular process for many of us, it's just like everything else is already there, okay? So, we think that getting this out there, having reflected the values of this community that directly, I'm not from the community, but the board is, and selected a lot of comments from people throughout the whole process, and we've worked on it, and so that's our view of it. If we put it to the voters, and if it's, if it passes, then, then that's the baseline. And so, that's basically it, happy to answer any questions, but, so.
Thank you. Okay, anybody want to comment, and you go?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thanks for your service to the town as well, I know it's hard being a board Tuesday, thank you for that. My name is John McCann, I live at 310 Christian Hill. Law with my wife is, I'm concerned about nineteen more pages of regulations telling us what we can and can't do on our own land. I ask you to reject this amendment, and let me tell you a lie. I'm concerned it could set a precedent that could be used to create additional restrictions in the future. The amendment states that visual impacts and property value impacts must be considered in producing solar farms. Today, it's solar farms. Tomorrow, it could be someone clearing trees on their own land that creates a perceived visual impact or property value impact. Once something like this is in place, I guarantee that eventually someone will hire a lawyer to pounce on that, and use it against one of us, making decisions about our own land. I'm afraid this is a slippery slope. I allow the impact of the solar farm on the view, it impacts me directly. My wife lives and I live on the oldest home on Christian Hill. We're also the highest home on the hill that has a western facing view. We have a wonderful and unimputed view of Big Hill and beyond. We are clearly and directly affected by the solar farm. It will impact our view, and may impact the price we get for our house, any unlikely event that we ever sell it. We're willing to risk that. I'm asking you to consider a different kind of view, one from the perspective of our children and grandchildren. We want to leave them a world that we can say we were good stewards of. All of us here want young people's dignity level and in Maine. The solar farm brings in jobs, both in construction and in maintenance, and has funds set aside for training and the growing field. It has a positive impact on our tax base, so our kids and our seniors won't be forced out of the house because taxes are too high. And all of us here, regardless of what side we're on, want to have a positive impact on our environment. We just have different views of what it looks like. I believe we have a moral obligation to vote the present and the future to do our part, as small as it may be, to reduce our state's dependence on increasingly expensive fossil fuels. I think all of us is in shock by our CMP bills lately. When my grandkids ask me what we did to make the world a better place to live, I want to say that Lowell took direct action, that we approved a solar farm that produces energy that will sustain in Maine, and help Maine citizens keep the lights on without going into death, that we did what we could to make a difference, that we were willing to make a sacrifice for the future. In summary, approving this amendment will lead to expanded oversight of our land, a negative impact of jobs, taxes and energy costs, and a negative impact on the environment. I don't want to tell my grandkids that we preserve our heat at the expense of their future. I ask you to reject this amendment to the level of importance. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to say something, come on, please come on.
Thank you. My name is Eric L. Branson, I live here in town, I've lived here for a few years. I'm opposed to this ordinance for a number of reasons. You asked the town, and the townspeople, to put forward a moratorium, so they did. They said they wanted a cause to do it right. So then they ordered this petition, and that circumvents the process, and spurs the rules into their place. Well, it's a compliment to the town of Denmark that we lived in their ordinance. That ordinance was developed by a group of citizens and elected officials to make an ordinance that was equitable to property owners and the town. This ordinance does none of that. So what's the problem? We have a moratorium, we don't need one person, it's personal opinion of how solar development should be applied to Lowell. Can I also object to this ordinance because it turns Lowell away from the future? It is not progressive or forward thinking. It limits, unreasonably limits property, uh, no, sorry. I have to write things down, because I get, I get a little nervous when you get excited about things, you know? But I believe that unreasonably limits projects that people with no solar access or potential on their property might want to join in. So vote no on this ordinance, and let's work together to do solar right.
My name is Teresa Asper, and I live on 309 Shayskill Road. I also am opposed to this ordinance. You said everything I wanted to say. Yes, some of my name is going to be leased for the solar project. I was going to benefit financially from that, yes, I was. It was comforting for me to know that my children and my family's future, when I cast on, was going to help them keep our family home going, also providing renewable clean energy for their future and their future broad planet. I live with my two old, my two daughters and my two grandsons in that house. Our Eben came up with this ordinance within a week of the moratorium being voted in. Kind of funny. Yes, the moratorium was supposed to be so we could take time to do solar right. If this ordinance passes, it will ban large scale solar, and most of the residents won't be able to pay the $10,000 to put panels on, you know, to pay the town to come, you know, have code enforcement come out, and I can't afford that. I can't afford that and solar panels and everything else. There's no way. I feel like this ordinance is being enforced on all of us, it's overly restrictive, and it tramples on the rights of all landowners. Hopefully, we can come to a better, we can reject this petition-driven ordinance and take control of this process, and put my faith in the planning board to come up with a better solution to really do solar right. We should be kind to each other and try to make this planet a better planet for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Andrew Brodman, I live on Shayskill Road. Twenty years ago, my wife and I bought our place here in Lowell because we were attracted to the quiet, rural character of the town. We previously lived in Centurion, New Hampshire, on Davis Hill. Over the course of ten years, where we lived there, we've seen this tremendous growth in development in our neighborhood, in the town as a whole, and we watched the character of the town change from a small town to really a small city. It didn't take long. Our home on Shayskill Road is owned residential. Our property abuts some large parcels that have been managed as woodlots. These parcels are zoned both residential and verbal. We realized when we first bought our home that the abutting land could be developed someday. We assumed that houses might be built. However, we never imagined that a 180 acre commercial power plant would be proposed directly abutting our home. I believe that Lowell needs zoning ordinance to regulate solar energy systems, and as many have said before, Lowell has zones specific to campgrounds, bark and dogs, and cemeteries. I believe the ordinance passed by or proposed by our Eben Association lets the town protect its rural character while allowing for community and personal scale solar systems. May not be perfect, but as the saying goes, sometimes perfect gets in the way of good. I believe this ordinance is good for Lowell, gives the planning board the flexibility to grant waivers, and it can be amended in the future if needed. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Martin Carver, I live at 455 Christian Home Road, I've been there almost ten years. My wife and I are bought the property because, quite frankly, it's, it's quiet, we enjoy it, we have the views, I mean, it, it's a lovely piece of property, too. What I'm looking at now is, people aren't going to know what the advantage is going, but I find out in November, we find out in November, that this industrial size solar farm is coming to town, you know, that that wasn't fair, people talk about fairness, that was definitely not fair, that was sneaky, and unfortunate, and unperfection. I've been a project manager for thirty-some years, I've worked in nineteen operations, I understand projects and how to get things done, and I don't think information technology, it changes, and you know what, something's going to change too, and what we see now for solar today is going to be darned. It's that quick, you know, the technology is shifting, and, and, you know, I can't hang my hat on, you know, let's go, all these solar farms. If you want solar farms, take a look at Friday, if you want something with that, God bless you, but I don't want a bad gas, I don't want to see it, and I don't want, you know, forty years, people are talking about passing it on to generations of children and grandchildren, passing on want, a blight? Come on, we can do better than that, let's preserve and protect what we have, and God bless everyone in this neighborhood, have it and enjoy it. I'm sure we'll have more of these, stocks and industrial size solar farms in the bad gas.
My name is Stormy Martin-Hell. I live at 46 Arkington Road, here in Lowell, and I've been living here in my school year. So I first became aware of this development, potential solar development in Lowell, back in December. I communicated with the planning board, and with the select board at that time, and essentially requested that up-house, I didn't have a shot following the laws in Lowell, because more of our work at that time, that in fact, that land would, would spend a little, that's time to explore, investigate, and develop alternatives. The alternative proposed by OEA is, has, although comprehensive and relatively well-written, there are some problems, but I'm looking for our alternative. Today, a letter to the select board, offering on the planning board, have you seen it?
Yes, we've seen it.
Where, where I set forth an outline for another alternative, that involves a development of specialized, what I call specialized kinds of subdivisions, that rely on solar energy primarily to provide power to the residents of such subdivisions, as well as power supplies that could be used for electric vehicles, and maybe other purposes. The alternative that I'm exploring is fundamentally different than what we're talking about here tonight, the proposal from OEA, and there may be other alternatives out there. We should take advantage of the time that we gave ourselves to allow people to pursue this, and to present those indications to their various decisions. In the end, the only reasonable alternative, because all of those would be enforceable in court, would be presented to the general public for a vote at a special town meeting in the form of a choice between or among alternatives. So, I guess what I'm asking for tonight is for the planning board to consider postponing voting on the OEA amendment until closer to the end of the period, the moratorium period, which we may want to, there may be a need to extend that moratorium period as we get more deeply involved in the scope of, of this investigation. So, I guess I'm just arguing for calm and patience, and the development of one, or two or more reasonable alternatives for people to, effectively offer to people at a special town meeting to vote. In the meantime, tend to a comprehensive plan, which will establish, hopefully, the panel level division when it comes to this matter, and associated zoning ordinances, and since I'm talking about subdivisions, we may need to, may be necessary to amend Lowell subdivision law. And in order to do that, my research has indicated that it might be necessary to amend Maine law as it relates to subdivisions, in order to allow provisions in real estate property deeds that establish the conditions of research on the use of solar energy within this town. So, I just, I guess, being true, to be moving forward, the town may be inadvertently signing up for something that is difficult to change in the end, and it would be better to just wait, get the package together, make a sensible decision, and grow the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Verrover, and I live on Palm Lane in Lowell. And I realize that ordinances do restrict people's rights, but I cannot imagine living in a in a town or a state did not have a firm set of ordinances. Because ordinances are rules and rules give people rights. Because when there are no rules, people can do whatever they want. And they feel good, for feel-good reasons, but you're taking away somebody's rights. So we need ordinances. And I realize sometimes they work against it. I've got a property I couldn't well put a shed between my house and a certain distance or I have so much lock coverage on my property. These are level ordinances. I have certain regulations on how I can access the street beside my driveway capacity. And that's just the way it is. We have, I don't know, 20 plus or minus land uses in our ordinances now. And frankly, if we had a more thorough set of ordinances, we wouldn't all be here tonight. Because the developer had come along and had a blueprint to follow and actually proposed a project that had been pre-thought out by the citizens in the creation of their ordinance. So we're behind the eight ball. And it's unfortunate for the folks that signed on to a bunch of leases with companies that really can't guarantee them because at the blink of a legislative eye, their leases might turn onto the... So the real problem is we don't have enough ordinances and this ordinance unfortunately has to come after the fact. And the real tragedy is that the folks that proposed this development, they had plenty of time, months, to instantly drop hundreds of pages on the citizens of this town. So even though we have a moratorium and a citizen group spent a lot of hours, hired professionals, did a lot of research, and an amazing amount of time and cooperation came up with a new solar ordinance, it was nothing compared to the time that was spent preparing the solar project and just dumping it on the town. It was nothing. If we had ordinances and didn't allow these attempts to fit projects into the most closest land use, which hopefully we're going to correct soon, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
My goal is to help these poor civilians over here. Just one question, couple questions. Do you ever ask what the board actually feels about this ordinance that has been presented? You've had it for better than a month now. I think it might help some people figure out, because it feels to me that life is better where you're being hamstrung. You can only, you have to take what's there for you. You can't let any input into it, the way I've seen it.
Well, I think the planning board's opinion, while it's probably interesting to you, but it really doesn't change the course of this action right now. The determination of what's going to happen next is happening at the town meeting when you go to Level. You know, we will, although, you know, we haven't met and talked about our opinions about this. We are not allowed to. We can only do this when we're sitting here. So, no, we haven't. The chances are of the real aggressiveness that we hear you talk today to us, tell us what they feel, then we close this meeting, we settle the theory, and then they'll talk about us. See, we can, we need to vote tonight to, or we need to give an opinion to the selectmen how we feel.
It seems to me that the opinion about our way to proceed has been thwarted. There's been enough input from you folks at the town level, some people on other sides of the fence, so to speak. It really should be voted, in my opinion, it should be voted down. Something different should be put out, with everybody put into it.
You know, we hear from another people. We heard, we got a few letters, we got a letter from Mr. Wagner and a few other emails. We hear from some people. I heard that people are upset over the fact that the ground rules that were outlined in the moratorium are not followed.
Exactly. I mean, you want level aside, just let all the level aside.
On the other hand, if you, I've been part of this town infrastructure now for a while and I realize how difficult it is to get things done and how difficult it is to get talent, money, and resources to create an ordinance. It's not an easy thing to do. You know, we have a bird in hand and it's tempting to say, let's go with it. But, you know, I personally, if you ask my opinion, I'm not sure which way to go because I would love to have a collaborative or be more stunned and have, I would listen to the industry, I would listen to the planning commission and, you know, settlement land commission, I would listen to our own resources here. We've got lots of talent.
I think there should be a little more input. I think more input we have, the better information we have, make better ordinance, I think, would be more acceptable. I thought everybody wants out.
Just, my, just a question, how many voting members signed petition for this ordinance? What do we have? Those are town residents that spoke out?
I don't have to know about it, knowing this, everybody is being, tense as a duck in the last conference election.
The process for petitions is set forth and stayed long and important and the rule was like 10% of the last board. So it was like 73 or 60, whether it was the threshold we needed to do. And we had some confusion because one of the people didn't very remember that one. It submitted over 200 signatures in space, I think, in three days.
And how certified the things are?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Luski. I thank you for your time. I prepared a statement, but I have to follow up on the previous comment about collaborative effort. It's an interesting prospect presented at this time, given that there was no collaboration of the town people in general before the September page application was dumped on the desk of the town hall. I was an, I'm next to my abutting property, I own my Christian Hill property since 2001. So I think it's a little disingenuous to ask for collaboration when deans were signed, discussions were had, a lot of preparation was done, and then people who were not involved in the process were sort of barred. And I would, obviously, I'll get into my prepared statements, but I think it's disingenuous to ask for collaboration if you look at the timeline of how this all unfolded. I've been a property owner at Level since 2001 and have supported the solar ordinance since presented by our EEN association. I'm familiar with the Level comprehensive plan that's of the past in a recent survey data. And I believe that this ordinance is in compliance with the sentiment expressed both in the past and the present. Level citizens have a long history of being environmentally touch anxious and continue to remain committed to protecting the environment. This ordinance allows citizens to play solar within the scale of location that helps to combat climate change while preventing the act of destruction of large parcels of forested lands, which is a natural infrastructure to combat change. The topic of solar has been discussed by Tom Fisher for several years. I am grateful to our EEN association for presenting an ordinance in such a timely fashion as it lends assistance to the town to bring our ordinance's current as it relates to solar energy. The solar ordinance mirrors other comprehensive, mirrors other local municipal plans and is now rather, rather responsible for solar excitement. On April 2nd, please vote yes, and let the public decide how they view solar rating.
I have a home in the East Shoreland Zone. From the minute my wife and I buy property in this town, we've had many people telling us what we can and can't do with our own property, including this board. And I don't have a problem with that because we adhere to the rules and we adhere to the regulations that were in place at the time. And it worked out to everybody's benefit. The bottom line is, we need ordinances. And this town has been lax in preparing those ordinances. They've been very slow in doing so. The comprehensive plan hasn't been updated for 30 years, but it has a very clear picture of what this land that's in question should be. And it's my understanding, based upon what has happened in other towns around us, that this board has a legal right to deny the petition to build solar ordinances in that area based upon the comprehensive plan in its entirety. Until that comprehensive plan is changed, that is still the land. So although I feel sorry for some of the people that thought that they could come in here and do whatever they wanted to do with their land, the bottom line is that they never could. They couldn't put these kind of things in there under the comprehensive plan, nor could they put these kind of things in there under the current ordinance. And this board, if they chose to, could deny that ordinance as it stands, that application as it stands. So we need to move forward. We've got a lot to do. We can't spend a lot of time on any one given thing because there's so much that needs to be done. We've got the dock ordinance, we've got the comprehensive plan, we've got all the land uses, we've got a lot on our plate. We've got an ordinance before us that contrary to what some of the people here have said tonight, was written to the wishes of the 200 people that signed the ordinance that put it in place. You can shake your head if you want to, but that's a fact. That's what these people were asking for. They signed an ordinance for it, and that's what we gave them. So I'm asking you, please, send this forward with a challenge vote. Thank you.
I'm Tim Seer. I live in Perrin, New York. I also have land on Christian Hill Road. And I'm in favor of this ordinance. I ask you to vote yes. Really, it is the will of the people. We have Simmons Initiative, and that is perfectly legal. That was a process that allows for people to vote pro or lean. That's happened, and they expressed their desires. Also, as far as a massive solar project, I would say the 1992 comprehensive plan is very clear. These are not what the town is aiming for, not the will of the people. The will of the people has been expressed within the 1992 comprehensive plan. It's especially expressed by the survey that we did. I'm on the comprehensive plan committee. We've been working on this for a year and a half. It's difficult to get stuff done because that's the nature of democracy. That's the nature of running a small town. These things take time. You have an ordinance before you that may be flawed, but is perfected work of, it's work from other towns, have we borrowed it? Certainly. That's how things are done. You talk to other towns and say, what have you done? We seek certain best practices. We're looking at that. We have an ordinance that can be changed. There can be changes afterwards. So it may be flawed, but afterwards, we can amend and make some changes. I urge you to vote on this. There is a sense of urgency to get this done. By the way, I also have intent to put solar on my property on Christian Hill, and I have a quote I just haven't done yet. And when I do, I'll have to follow the regulations.
I live on Warren, Cuser Forks Lane. And solar, I'm not pro-solar, none of you is pro-solar. This project does affect where I live. I just think that, again, I really reiterate that we said we need talent. And now all of a sudden, we have this comprehensive plan on, so we have this ordinance, I think we should be rushing into this. We have the time, and I reiterate, a lot of people said, let's take the time that we said we needed to come up with something. If that's, we're going to hope over solar, great. We're not hoping over solar, that's great too. I just think that we need to take some time for, for we set something in place that's going to affect everything. That's just my opinion.
Yes, sir.
My name is Marty Fensley. I live on Hill Street down the Level Road. My support on behalf of supporting this ordinance. This ordinance is no more restrictive than any other ordinance that we have in town. It's the rules that follow by, and that's what all the other authorities have. We hear all the benefits that we're going to get from solar. I want for solar, but let's do it properly. Let's not have a massive, big solar farm. If you want solar in property, you can have solar. And this ordinance doesn't restrict anybody from having solar. Is it taken from other communities? Yeah, that's what we do. You grab the destiny, you grab the destiny, bring it all together, blend it, and come out something that works. Everybody talks about the town. It's not being rushed or shut down in ways gross, but it's good work of ordinance that will benefit the community as a whole. We hear all the benefits that we're going to get from this project. Money, taxes, jobs, power. The power's not going to benefit Level. It's going to go to CMG. They do what they want. It's got no direct effect on any resident in town. Jobs, there'll be some jobs to build it, and then they'll all go away. So where's the massive job difference? There is, we just need to do this, everybody have a vote. I recommend that the board here passes it up the chain to the selectmen. Give the town an opportunity and a special town meeting to express their wishes and vote townwide. This is what should be done. You talk about input from everybody? All I hear is, let's belong, let the solar industry comes in and help us create our solar ordinance. No, this is for Level. The Level people should pray this ordinance, not the United States. With that said, I ask you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
I live on Arrow Road. I'm going to move off a process for this and talk about the substance of the solar amendment that's been proposed. And I think if people focus on what it actually does, they'll see it's something that they want to support. And as others have pointed out, there's something, some aspect that they don't like, they can abandon. So what does this ordinance do? What it does at high level just says, we're going to put the right size solar in the right place. Very simple. Now, what is that in practice? What the ordinance does is it divides things up into three modules, called small, medium, and large. And there's technical, defined terms that lawyers are able to handle. It's all going to be some lawyer, but small, medium, and large, but it's not technical. So what's small? Right? It's up to 1,200 square feet of palace space. How much palace space is that? It's like three and a half times the typical residential installation, right? What do you have to do to create that? It's a use of right. You need a permit. You need to go down, pay a standard permit fee. It's a use of right. You need a permit. You need to go down and pay a standard permit fee. Right? You're not paying a thousand bucks to do this. It's like filling a shed. Look at the medium sized ones. They're bigger, right? They go up to a half acre of panel space. That's a lot of panels. That's going to generate enough power to be one of these small community solar systems. If you want to build one of those, you could do that. And under this ordinance, you can do it anywhere in any zone. Ground-based, you can't even go to four protected zones, but you can do it anywhere else. What's the fee there? It's five hundred bucks. So community solar project, you can put in anywhere, ground-based, except for four protected zones. Five hundred dollars. It's only going to be good for these large-scale systems that we have bigger fees and more restrictions on where you put it. An industrial-sized system is put in, not surprisingly, the commercial and industrial district. That's what the commercial industrial district exists to do, right? You put industrial things in that district. This ordinance, as I said, if you have an industrial-sized solar project, you need to put it in the commercial industrial system. Again, there's a big fee there, right? Because there are a lot more performance standards, there's a lot more evaluation around, a lot more work needs to be done to demonstrate it as a condition of use application. It's not a use of right, unlike these small and medium sized ones, which are uses of right. There's no approval process there. Just need to project. It's only the large ones where you have like ten thousand dollar fee, you have a condition of use application. And those are placed where they belong. We have a zoning system that's set up to do exactly that. And what this ordinance is doing is following that system. It's ensuring that we all have the right individually to do our own projects, participate in a community-based project, or do one of those medium sized ones. Or we can authorize some developer to do a large-scale one, but put it in the commercial industrial district. But that, when you think about voting on this ordinance, what I would suggest is you focus on the substance of it and ask yourself, is this doing what we want? Our sense is putting this together, and we've talked to a lot of people in town. This is what the people in town want. Ultimately, they will decide afterward. But I simply encourage you as a board to support that because the substance of it is what I think you would want to fill out at town hall.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pay taxes on lot twenty-six, twenty-seven, lot fourteen, and one twenty-three Main Street. You signed up in good faith to do a thankful task for our town. But wow, nobody would have ever seen something like you're experiencing in one street once. There are always many contentious issues in town, and nothing like this. I found this on the planning board and the school board at the same time, and the town had made the decision to go into Sats seventy-two and to build this new summer school. That was highly contentious. The people were against it. But it was progress. It needed to be done, and it went through. Today, one additional utility pool at school is unacceptable to the neighbors in comparison. Yes, protections changes sometimes they need to change. Everyone likes an air beach, but it was a marsh until my grandfather was cast as road commissioner. They can hold those in a bunch of sand. And clearly, the marsh should make a beach further away. Probably not what we would do today. You were president of the biggest change in all of history. Never before has there been a crowded people showing up at town hall to properly pick open a meeting. The old town meeting process and volunteer boards has bumped up our social media ability to effectively reduce cancer culture misinformation to sway public opinion. This enabled relatively small, local people to take over issue and the private boards' work. The issue of solar power has been extensively discussed by the private boards since twenty sixteen, but nothing got finalized. I don't blame the previous boards. They're volunteers. Time goes on. Cans get kicked down the road for all their intentions. And still, there was no real opportunity for the planning board to work for the solar ordinance. There was no real care for the volunteer board. And I'm hearing today there's still massive misperceptions on that whole thing because it's never been heard. The special industry calling themselves Irene has tied their hands to putting the ordinance they want. They don't want your input or other stakeholders in what the rallying cry was left lovingly sad. In this case, you are the people elected to represent love. You are love. I guess they didn't have faith in that either because their stance quickly changed to, here it is, you don't have to worry yourself about it. We've developed it for you. And by the way, we used the petition process and took it out of their hands for a while. Before that, they wanted a moratorium to be put in place. Rallying cry, yeah, but slow down, take pause, do the solar right. When they got that in place, suddenly the rallying cry changed from slow down to do solar right to do it right now. Yes, things got out of control. It's in your power and it's your responsibility. The solar goes down, handle this issue appropriately for all of our taxpayers. You have a hundred and eighty days you can take to do this. You can have another hundred and eighty days after that. Irene forced this role because they didn't want to be delivered on it. They gave you the answers that they want. If you do not, if you do not take that control process, that is the final one, the consequences will be years of challenging this ordinance at the end of your life. But just to put some more on these shoulders, if you don't step in, there will be no reconciliation for the division of the hard feelings in town. People have called me and the dummies, because we used our land for something they think is unsullied. I think they are selfish because they sacrificed two million two land reservation for thirty-five years of one view they don't like. Nobody really knows, and I have led by the top of the land trust operating one way of the preservation forever. So long after the people's room, don't actually look at the view, it would be protected and it would be for good life again. Okay. The hard feelings and relationships could possibly be lost forever. Chain is high for all of us. When I was a young man, the town was run by people who drove by walls and out there with chainsaws. Now it's being run by people where private planes drive the bushes and pile of lobbies. At times, they are changing. You leading a proper review with all voices heard could help.
My name is Steve Shidmore. I live on Coffin Road. I don't have any prepared statements. I do not have a statement. I don't like speaking in front of groups of people. But I do feel strongly about this issue. The vote for the more to win was, what was the final count for the voting? Two forty-three, break it? So they overwhelmed the majority of the town once the more to win. And I bet if you ask them, they're also against this large scale project. I guess what I would also say too is the end is not just a surprise means we're worried about a better tomorrow than what we have today. Are we going to sacrifice our town, sacrifice this valuable habitat for a hope that we'll be able to get to a better tomorrow? Are we going to purchase solar power, solar panels built in China, usually by forced labor, to make ourselves feel better? There are many other options for renewable energy in this state. We have to explore those. We shouldn't rush into a large-scale solar project. And we should take the advice of this group. It's not a small group. Irene isn't a small group. We overwhelmed the majority of voters supporting this. So I ask that you support this ordinance.
In my research, this is a surprise, a surprise deal. I come back and looked at this solar company first approached the town of Sweden. And they had a lot of that process. They made through the minutes and I read through all of them very diligently. And they made their presentation. It was a back and forth with the tape. They were actively involved in coordinating the citizens of Sweden to put a large utility scale site, thirty-five megawatts is what they approved for by the main home utility commission on September twenty twenty. When that didn't work the way they wanted it, a judge across the street came to love it and worked diligently with a few select citizens. I wasn't part of that process, yet I look across the street and there it is, and it's a hundred and eighty-eight is a clear plan. I think it's remarkable that although it's been town revision, a lot of people have come together. I have now known neighbors that I haven't have in twenty years. Most people tend to keep to themselves, but we're free to help and handle a need. The people are above the average judges and kind, and it's all been a very welcoming atmosphere. This has been awful to depart the community that's been so divided. And I think there are good will and faith in the initial steps of this that the company had given to the citizens of Sweden. We may not be in such a contentious state now. And I think there's so many bad things in the world that if we have an ordinance that we can work with, that other companies can look at and know without a jolt, the little people all, maybe the way we got here wasn't ideal, but we weren't given that opportunity as the town next to us was. So it is what it is. I say we try to inform it the best we can. We have other things, more questions coming up. And let's just try to heal, basically. Thank you.
My name is Justin Lewis. I grew up over on Sabatow. Went to local schools here, Anne Field School, Quonter, and some other school. I was a fifth grader. I had a little solar powered dollhouse. It was a bad place. I graduated in nineteen ninety-two. So solar's been on the table for a long time. For me, it's always been a dream. So when I see solar coming to level, it gives me a great excitement. I'm also an installer. I work very low and it's fine to sell on roofs. It gives me great satisfaction. Every project I do, looking at homeowners, getting solar out there, people get excited. So when I saw this big project, I thought, this is amazing. Solar is coming to level. And then I saw the resistance to it. This was really shocking. Here we are. It really does divide people. The baby people are torn up about copyrights. Whose views were what? Comes down to a good process for the town. I've always been proud of you guys. You have such a democratic process. When I see the democratic process being what I call bastardized, sorry to say, in order to bring forward something so rapidly when there's a town sitting there waiting to do the right thing, which may be to reject this great scale project. And that's okay. But when the process gets perverted, that's sad. I think that the ordinance as it stands that's proposed is very realistic. I think it would limit any kind of community scale project. Right now, it's essentially half a year. Large scale says to it, that's in the industrial zone, which is very small. And pretty much limited to one acre of five to ten. Not going to give many other people in the town an opportunity to do a bigger scale project. Is it going to be rural to have some parks in the woods? I don't know. But there are questions for the whole town, not just this special interest group. Please reject the ordinance. Let the planning board do their job. They may reject the border project very well. But they may be here opportunities for other landlords to do some progressive things. They may develop, and that is houses that are all part of the solar. They get us not possible in this world. They don't agree on that voting. It's okay to take the time to do the right. I agree. Please let the people who like it to do their job do the right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're coming to an end. And I would like to, I want to vote to conclude the public hearing. And make a motion to be voted to close the public hearing. Second? Anyone in favor? Okay, we're closing the public hearing. We now have a few minutes to talk amongst ourselves. Voice of your opinion. Any more fingers if you have any? Any other comments? Anyone in the audience? So we, okay.
If I may, maybe to try to explain the role of the planning board. And I understand the question is whether it's sort of being vital, which is, has provided an opinion because they act as the town's contract planner. There's still people here on this ordinance in that this is a petitioned ordinance. It's been the requisite number of people have signed petition, provided an ordinance, and so the select board has to, even on the next court issue, which would be the town meeting or until the Saturday, or it's too late to have the hearings tonight and do that, or call a special town meeting within the next sixty days. That's it. They're going to try and they have to act on that. So, and this board is going to try to, all you can do under the ordinance under state law is do what is due tonight as required, which is the whole public hearing. And then to make a recommendation to the select board and to the town lead. And as that recommendation has to be made, so that's the next court of business tonight of proposing the public hearing. I just want to make sure you all understood, if there's any questions about why can't we have that tonight, it's because of state law, it's all these timelines, and those are on the town, on the select board, and on this board. And that's, and even if this board were to get comments for a third party, it can't change the ordinance. Now, as comments have noted, there's a possibility of this is an act or to be amended in the future. And the town, as I understand it, is working with Southern Maine Regional Planning to develop the project to put together a new comprehensive plan and new zoning ordinance. And one more thing I just want to try to correct, just so we all have the same, we're all on the same page. Several times you could state that we have a comprehensive plan that we're endorsed and, you know, projects might be denied. A comprehensive plan is a look at the community, it's inventoryizing the community, and it's where you want to go and how you're going to get it, or how you're going to input that petition of where you want the community to go. It is a guidance document. It is not enforceable. Your ordinances have to be consistent with the comp plan. The comprehensive plan itself is not enforceable. The ordinances are. So it's one of the, try to clarify that misperception again. But right now, the town is working, updating this thirty-year-old comprehensive plan, and that's taking time. It's a long time to get there. It'll take a long time to clean up, but it is getting there. And then the town will be taking on the task of amending its ordinances to be consistent with that comprehensive plan. So I'd like, thank you, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page for this conference.
Well, I want to have the comprehensive plan. And I just put a plug in for the comprehensive plan committee interviews every Monday night in five thirty, six thirty. If you want to contribute or take part in a discussion about what the comprehensive plan should do going forward, please send me an email, and I'll send you a doodle, and we'll get you scheduled. We interview, we talk to four people at a time. And we're now only doing this, we've been doing it for all year. There's only one in the line. There's only one in the house, realizing we're not carrying it for the company. So just an aside. Send me an email if you want to interview. We're now at a stage where we should be. Any further comments on the planning board on that topic?
Yeah, I think. You two could be rock stars.
The same way. Well, I think that, you know, I certainly hear both sides concerned. And I can see the frustration for people that voted for the moratorium. And now, maybe later, we've got this petition for this ordinance. I can definitely see the frustration. I can also see the frustration from landowners who have a six-hundred-page application, you know, drawn to the town hall. So the process is, you know, is frustrating for both sides. Me personally, I think Walven was too big and I think this ordinance is too restrictive. So that's my opinion, is that we swung too far in both ways to put it out. So I mean, I'm really, I've spent a lot of time thinking, do I support this amendment on it? Because I'm essentially supporting something that I believe is too restrictive on private property rights for the town and for the, you know, the global climate. And just to, you know, to be totally honest, I feel like if we pass it, with the intention of amending it, and in my opinion, fixing some of the things that are too restrictive, you know, that's, that might be a good direction to go. If we, if we say, no, we're against this, let's take the rest of a hundred and eighty days and figure something out. That's also an option. It might piss a lot of people off. You know, and then the question is really this for the town. Did the two hundred people that voted for the moratorium, you know, they, obviously there's pulled one in for that. Or I forget how many people were here that voted for the moratorium, but it was a lot. Yeah, yeah, and then the petition, a lot of people signed that, so I. I think, in my opinion, I do not need to insult anybody that signed that. But it seems to me that if you're, I think a lot of people were signing that. My opinion that I'd be wrong to say no to how big this Walven thing is, you know. And then, when you actually look at the ordinance that's being proposed, I think it's too small. And I know I'm going back and forth here. These are my thoughts. And I think the board, we are, we've been navigating some trouble waters for a while. And tonight, do we, do we, do we make the decision tonight then?
Yes, we have to make a recommendation.
To the select board?
The planning board's town meeting.
Great.
But it's going for the stock meeting no matter what. And the people are willing to start.
All right, it essentially makes us a town to make a decision.
I think that we should let the process unfold. And I think everyone will vote. You know, and just because the kind of ordinance in front of us does not mean that we can't change it in the future. And I think you said it before, we'll have many special town board ordinance changes to be made. And I feel like if we got a process that someone puts a petition in and enough people back it, that we should, you know, recognize that.
Could I suggest a motion that we can think about and then maybe work with that? The ordinance has to make a written recommendation regarding a passage to the municipal offices to select board and to the town meeting. You know, regarding a passage, I mean, it could recommend a passage, it could recommend against a passage. It could be, take no action. But just to throw something out there, perhaps a motion to recommend a passage of the amendment of level zoning ordinance for purposes of regulating solar energy systems. Motion to recommend a passage to that ordinance to the select board and town meeting and to direct the chair to place that recommendation in writing.
I will second that.
You have to make, you make a motion. Not being, you know.
Just make you a follow-up.
Unregulated.
Follow-up. Okay. Motion to recommend the passage to the select board and the town meeting and to direct the chair to place that recommendation in writing. So we will, that will give the select board, you know, I think decided we're allowed to send it on to the town meeting. We'll get a second to that. Thank you, seconded and discussed further. Motion to recommend the passage, oh, sorry, of this ordinance, as it is written, for those preventing the level zoning ordinance for purposes of regulating solar energy systems. And this is the twenty-page ordinance we're talking about, the power eating association provided by the board. To passage this to the select board and the town meeting and to direct the chair to place that recommendation in writing. So I would have to write something else to give to the select board, whatever it is, like the buildings, which should go to the town meeting. Because I'm going to ask Jim to do it the right way. Okay, the motion's on the table. It's seconded, I see. I need further discussion. To me, the main charge is really, it's about the first speech that, it's about alternative energy, it's about climate crisis. Something is to be done. I'm not sure this is, well, is the place to do large-scale solar development. But our place is in Maine and people are working on this. So whatever we do here, I think we should keep our options open. I'm in favor of getting started with our eating. And I would say if we want to do something in addition, we will order on the internet. Okay, the motion's seconded. I'm looking for a vote. Big two to vote by raising your hand or saying are. Who's in, all in favor of this motion to recommend it forward to the select board? Anybody? Yes?
I want to vote in favor, but I just want to make something clear. Clear to everybody. I'm always voting in favor with the intention to push some amendments. Because I think that this is too much.
Thank you.
You know, and I'm going to push for some amendments. But I think something, I understand what our eating's done and I totally respect it. And I think that there's been a great job done. But I think that we as planning board should just take a good heavy look at this and then figure out that we need to make some changes. And I think some amendments would be appropriate. And I also do want to hear from solar panel installers and maybe even ask Walven, you know, a company, you know, ask their opinion. Ask if there's a smaller challenge there. And if not, then not. So I will support the ordinance with the intention of pursuing amendments as a board.
And just as an aside, the town will need help doing this. We need a ordinance review and development committee. We need to speed up our entire action. We need to have twice monthly meetings for the planning board, one meeting for CEO applications the next meeting for ordinance development. And we could use some help from volunteers for certainly lots of talent. Like to talk to the guys. Okay, I think we're supposed to adjourn. That's right, that's the, sorry, we have some other business. It's the overboard, Alan, the admin.